Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Don Patrol. I'm Cliff Krieger, your host. And today is Friday, the 27th of October. Eileen Del Rosse should be bouncing in here any minute. And at 7 o'clock, we're going to have a debate between Fru Nkembeng, the challenger, and Paul Rathayem, the incumbent in District 7 for City Council. Looking back in history, in 1954 Benjamin O. Davis Jr. becomes the first African-American general in the United States Air Force. When he was a three-star and stationed in the Philippines, I worked several levels down underneath him when I was in Thailand. His father, Benjamin O. Davis, became the first black general officer in the Army. He went through West Point and was silenced all four years, which means that his fellow cadets did not talk to him except on official business, which is...
Why was that?
Because he was black.
They just didn't talk because he was black?
Yeah.
What year was this?
That would have been in the 20s.
Not that it was ever okay, but 1920s?
Yeah.
A hundred years ago. Those people were crazy.
We were having a resurgence of the Ku Klux Klan in those days, and not good. Despite what some people may say, we've come a long way. In 1962, Major Rudolph Anderson, U.S. Air Force, became the only direct human casualty of the Cuban Missile Crisis when his U-2 reconnaissance aircraft was shot down over Cuba by a Soviet-supplied surface-to-air missile.
You know, the Cuban government tells the Cubans that their superior defenses took down the United States fighting. Their superior defenses kept the Americans from taking over Cuba. They have their crashed airplane parts on display. Interesting.
We all have our own stories.
We all have our own history. Now, on the lighter side of things, Cliff. One of my friends sent me this. And it says, "At my funeral, take the bouquet off my coffin and throw it into the crowd and see who's next." I have a lot of lighthearted friends. A little bit of a chuckle there.
It's a little bit. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Life. I'm Cliff Krieger, your host. Eileen is headed out to work. We have a debate here between the two candidates for the 7th District of City Council. On my left is the challenger, Fru Nkembeng, and on my right is the incumbent, Paul Rathayem. So we're going to start out with four minutes for each of you to introduce yourselves, and then at the end, we'll have four minutes for your final presentation. We're looking for two-minute answers on the questions. So let's start with Paul Rathayem. Tell us about yourself.
Thank you, Cliff, and thanks to City Life, and thanks to Ben Aminé-Fru being here tonight, today. It is my honor to be part of this discussion. I call it discussion. So before I start it, I just want to say hello to everyone who are watching at home. My name again is Paul Rathayem. I'm Low City Councilor, represent District 7, including the acre. My first term in office is very much about reshaping the vision and the direction of the city, including District 7. I humbly ask for your vote November 7 to send me back to the City Council to implement those visions. My accomplishment and my vision for the acre is the acronym of the acre: A, C, R, and E. A is for affordable housing and infrastructure. C for community safety and quality of life. R for respect and honor our veterans and elders. E for economic development, education, and environment. As you know, that Lowell is lacking behind on housing, and every year, the city fall far short of enough housing just to keep up with the population growth. It's nearly a shortage of nearly over 4,000 units in the past 15 years. The statistics show recently by Lowell Forward and Nemcoq showing that the city lacking at least 240 to 300 units today to meet the demand. Failing to produce these housing causing the higher rent and mortgages. 60% of Lowell residents are renters. Out of those numbers, 55% of household are rent burdened. The City Council, including myself, we were voting to change the zoning to lower the barriers to allow more housing production. The City Council voted recently to change the zoning for downtown mixed-use zoning, called DMU. The change that allow off-street parking to zero from one space per unit, eliminate special permit for required for development for 3 to 10 residential units in the DMU zone district. The city also just voted this past Tuesday, and I'm proud to say that I'm very supportive of this MBTA zoning. The city proposed a three-transit oriented development. It's called TOT, Overlay District, to allow more multifamily residential development by rights per MBTA community legislation that pass that allow to...
30 seconds.
...to 15 units per acre located within half miles of the railroad station, and no age restriction to allow more suitable homes for families with children. And thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul and Fru.
Thank you very much, Cliff. Thanks to City Life Show. Thank you, Paul, for us sitting here and discussing, and acknowledge and appreciate your service for the past two years. Hello, Lowell. I have been in Lowell and living in the District 7 since 1985. My name is Fru Nkembeng. It is humbling in my heart to know that the residents of District 7 are listening and watching because we all believe in what Lowell can be. In the face of insecurity, we believe there can be peace. In the face of despair, we know there can be hope. And in the face of division, we are certain there can be compromise. I have been walking the streets and talking to the people of District 7. And talking to them gives me a sense that the people of District 7 really need somebody who is around and available to talk to them, to listen to them, to represent them adequately in City Hall. I ask your vote. Honestly, I would not take it for granted to represent you. Paul had said that his acronym is the acre, but I believe that we are running to represent District 7, which includes the Lowell Highlands and the Acres. So I would be a representative for the whole of District 7, not only focusing on the acre, and also where the concentration of the whole of Lowell, which District 7 mirrors the whole of Lowell and the whole world, including Cambodia Town and the very, very working people. I have walked there and talked to the businesses, and they say that they need someone who should be there to represent them, and that it is really energizing to see me come here and talking to them. I've walked the streets along Pine Street where you have mechanics, and everyone is there. I will fight to make sure that you equally get your share of the budget. And sometimes District 7 is really bearing the brunt of taxes and everything, but the taxes can go up. But I wonder, these areas, they live on minimum salary. The salary never increases, but taxes increases. I would fight to make sure that businesses in these areas receive support from City Council. Again, I am passionate about education. I have four children who are product of the Lowell High School. And my daughter, who finished high school, went to UMass Amherst, went to BU, and graduated from John Hopkins University with a PhD in public health and is a professor at Minnesota. My son graduated from Lowell High, went to WPI, and also has an MBA in University of Indiana and is an engineer in Atlanta. My third son was the president of Lowell High in 2016, and a graduate of Suffolk University and is doing graduate studies. And my last son is at UMass Dartmouth. I am passionate about education. I know how parents, immigrant parents, particularly in District 7, can really work for the children. And I will support after-school programs and fight for to represent District 7. I honestly ask your vote that when you go, you think whether you have been adequately represented for the past two years. I want to move Lowell forward, so please join me and give me your vote on District 7 so that we can jointly move Lowell to a better and prosperous future. Thank you.
Okay. So the first question, and I'll pass this to Paul, and then we'll give Fru a chance...
I got two minutes to answer, right?
Right. To answer. And yesterday, I was driving around with my oldest son, and he said, "How do we revitalize downtown?" And that fit in quite nicely with my first question. How do we revitalize downtown?
Thank you for the question. It is a really critical question, and the City Council, including myself, working to address that. I mentioned the Council makes some zoning changes, and the first thing this City Council, including myself, did is to reduce the barriers of the housing development. As you drive around, you see the first floor on Merrimack Street particularly have all these three or four units of properties that are being left empty, and only the first floor that has the businesses. So as I mentioned, the City Council made to move to reduce the parking so that whoever will produce housings on the second and the third floor will not be required to have on-street parking because their garage, John Street Garage, is there and to accommodate the housing development. Number two, this Council voted to allocate some money. We call it the elevator because similar to the development that I did at 60 and Middlesex Street, that we need elevator to go up to the second and third floor. It's part of the American Disability Act. So the city set aside and working with the LDFC...
30 seconds.
...so that we'll be providing some funding for the owner who developed second, third floor. Lastly, the city have just signed up with a company to manage startup businesses downtown. This past Tuesday, we discussed that and was presented to the Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Fru.
Thank you very much, Cliff. I remember in the 2000s, when downtown, when I came to this country, downtown was booming. You had stores and CVS and so many Laboniche and all these wonderful restaurants that attract the people. Downtown was really the world in miniature because you can have, you can go there and have a taste of the world and see many things. So I feel that the City Hall should be able to come up with a plan to revitalize downtown and also convene a meeting of business, people around town, would work with E for All, Middlesex Community College, and call and sensitize the people about what incentives can they give small businesses like restaurants and support them to be able to flourish. When I walk downtown, I see most of the stores are vacant, and some of this is as a result of high rents and inability to be able to sustain. But if I am voted in Council, I work with the City Hall and the Planning Division to be able to organize a forum whereby jointly with the Chamber of Commerce, E for All, and all the local businesses, and downtown can actually give free interest loans to people who are willing to invest downtown, and that itself will revitalize downtown and bring people in, and also reduce taxes of anyone who is willing to start business downtown.
Thank you, Fru. My second question is about transparency, which I think is important, but in this specific, do we as residents have a right to know how many immigrants from our southern border are coming to Lowell? I mean, it seems to be just a cloud out there, and I have no sense of what's really going on. So, Fru, do we have a right to know about how many immigrants are coming and what's going on?
We have a right to know, but I would say that that is really beyond the local level because before immigrants come, and they have to enter through the border. And that is a task that the local administration, up to the state administration and the federal administration should be able to give that statistics. Because I would not hold the local administration, the City Hall, or the city manager for him to provide that data. The state and the federal government should be able to provide that data. But I would say that the City Hall should be able to work with the state to know who is coming in and in what capacity. Because listen, even though these people are coming, they are coming in with a lot of business and a lot of things to contribute. We made, some people look at immigrants as a burden. America, the age gap, these people who are coming are very young and vibrant. If we don't allow that, the future of job employment will really be at stake. So I do think that we should use smart ways of enabling people to come in, but not just look at them as a burden, but also look at them as, if not benefactors now, they could be beneficiary now.
30 seconds.
But tomorrow, they would be benefactor because they would be, they will start businesses, local businesses. When I drive down Cambodia Town, I see local stores, these convenience stores that are brought up by these people who are so hardworking and contributing to the economy of this country and pay tax that could alleviate and move the city forward.
Paul, we don't have the information. What do you think? How do we get that information?
The City Council is as frustrated as you are, and the same with the City Administration Manager, Tom Golden. Keep the Council abreast of what's happening and the recent report on the website, one of the websites saying that, oh, the state may not need the ICC after all because immigrants not coming. So the next day, the governor's office issue a press release saying that that's too premature. The governor did not say that. It's still on the table. However, we don't have the exact information of when the migrant will be coming and then how many will be coming. So we kind of all wait and see the same thing. Immigrant is an asset. You know, oftentimes, people think that we are a burden, and I'm former refugees, immigrant, myself. We see America as a land of opportunity as long as you're willing to work hard. My wife and her family came to Lowell in 1983, so by 1993, they were able to purchase their first home that we live in right now. So they work very hard. They not become a burden to the system. They go to work right away, and these migrants will provide a really needed labor force that are shortage in this country, particularly in the hospitality, in the restaurant businesses, and manufacturers that are really struggling to hire people. And this is important. The transparency go beyond than that. The city would also put all the information that we have on the city website, including the APP of funding to support all small businesses, the grants that are coming up. You know, CDBG, the city put out $1.6 million for businesses and nonprofit to apply. The city also set up the working group to help the businesses when they face difficulties during the COVID. They receive $5,000 from the city. Thank you.
Okay. And you mentioned the Inner Conference Center, Paul.
Can you switch that mic closer to you?
Me?
Yeah.
Sorry. You mentioned the Inner Conference Center, Paul.
Yes.
Is using that as housing for refugees the best use of that facility? Or are there other uses that are better for the community overall? And what are the alternatives?
Well, thank you for the question, Cliff. The ICC, it has already rooms to house people. I see this as a temporary transit where people are coming in, they stay and go through the processing process after they process, being processed, and then get all the regular paperwork. The city working with the local organization, I think the city already requested the city manager convene all the local nonprofits and churches together to come up with a strategy how to help these migrants if and when they come to Lowell after finishing processing. And I know one particular, like CTI, CBA, the churches, both the First Baptist Church downtown on Church Street and then Elliott Presbyterian Church. And similar to what when Cambodian refugee came in 1980s, Elliott Presbyterian Church and their Congregational members take in some of the Cambodian family, including my wife and her family. And then they found an apartment for the family on Salem Street, and they become, you know, they have their apartment of their own. So these are the solution. I see it as a temporary processing center where migrants stay...
30 seconds.
...go through the process, and then they move on to permanent housing, and then jobs and education for children. Thank you.
Fru, how do you see the Inner Conference Center being utilized in the next few months and then in the long term?
Well, Cliff, I am not on the City Council, and I don't know what decisions was made between the City Council and the state. And if this was a state's decision, then the City Council's hands are tied. But I would say you just asked a question about how do we revitalize the downtown to make it economically attractive? A hotel downtown is one of the impetus to encourage economic revitalization. And if we, and if you look around town, we have so many public vacant, empty buildings around. To me, I would not, it would not be a wise decision economically and strategically to bring people to occupy the hotel that would attract people to come here, maybe spend money and leave. So I would rather look elsewhere and look at the free vacant public buildings. If you look at it, there are many of them. So I do think that it's not really a wise decision, and I think there are many, many other alternatives. But as I mentioned, I'm not blaming the City Council because I don't know the logistic in coming to that conclusion. But and also from my vague knowledge that this decision is pushed down locally from the state.
30 seconds.
So in that respect, I don't think it is a viable decision to bring, to use the conference in for, to host the immigrants.
Okay, thank you, Fru. The City Council's made a decision on ADUs from a Lowell point of view, but I see the Governor Maury Healy working to try and solve our housing crisis, and I could see the state mandating ADUs across the Commonwealth. How do you think that's going to impact us and how should we respond, Fru?
That's a very, very question that really touches my heart very much because in the district where I am, District 7, that is the acre and the Lowell Highlands, it is the most densely populated district in the state. it is the most densely populated district in the state, very crowded, and really need affordable housing. And if you look at it, there are so many people in this area who pay taxes, and the tax rate is going up, and some of them are managing two, three jobs. But as the taxes go up, their income, their standard of living is not going up as comparatively. And I would really think that, I mean, the state is making a very wise decision looking at it. I am a resident of the Lowell Highlands, that's close to Cambodia Town and also the Acres. So I think the idea of ADU, Assessable Dwelling Units, is that which is welcome, but as the city voted to put that on hold now, well, I mean, if the state considers it, the state sees a lot of importance in it, and they see more than what we look locally. And I do really feel that that will be beneficial in my district.
Thirty seconds.
In my district. So talking about whether I do accept the ADU plan, I say yes, and I think I'm looking forward positively to see what the state will do that will meet the needs of the resident on District Seven. Thank you.
Paul, if the state mandates ADUs, what's that going to do to us?
Thank you, Cliff. I'm for, I'm one of the four city councilor who vote yes to ADU. And I respect my colleague's decision to put it off and to allow the state to come in down the road later. And this is what happened to other parts of the country. California, even New Hampshire next door, they have statewide ADU. And it bothers them to listen to the radio, and the person from New Hampshire never mentioned that, you know, in New Hampshire, the state has a statewide ADU. The reason the governor add ADU to her $4 billion bond bill for housing is that to allow ADU by rights, meaning that they do not have to go through the body who make the decision, like planning board or zoning board of appeal. But as long as they can meet the local guideline, this proposal of ordinance of ADU by the city of Lowell has a very specific limitation, and then my colleagues wrote down. But the state will be more liberal in as far as the ADU. California has the same thing. There's a lot of pushback from cities and towns, so California create the ADU by rights throughout the state with minimal reasonable requirement by the locals. So this will come down to, again, the city of Lowell have to decide. Remember that this is, don't look at this as a problem. It's a shared solution. ADU is just one component. As I mentioned, that this city council voted to lower the zoning requirement for the DMU, Downtown Mixed Use, the MBTA zoning. And ADU is one small portion of the housing production. That is not forcing any homeowner to create ADU. But if I own a home, I want to create ADU, I should be able to do without having to go to Board of Appeal, hire an attorney and all of that. My District Seven, people from various part of the world of immigrants and refugees lived in, they don't speak English.
Okay. Changing the subject a little bit, Paul, John used to have a stack of papers about this thick that was unfulfilled jobs in terms of school building maintenance. What should we be doing to do a better job keeping the schools in good condition?
Right.
And I understand teachers buy on their own dime air conditioners to put in their classrooms. That just seems like an undue burden on teachers.
Thank you, Cliff, and thanks for the question. It is very critical. And this city council, when we were sworn in last January 2022, the mandates that we given to the city manager is that we have to have a long-term capital planning, just like your homes, my home, we set aside money for emergency for repairs. So in the past, before I was sworn in, I was elected, the city would only raise, you know, like minimal taxes. As you know, the inflation go faster than what the, so what the tax rate in the city was raised due to the fact that back then, it had some issue with the pandemic, and the city was trying to be, you know, conservative. We don't know where the funding's coming from and all of that. And as a result, a lot of job are not filled. And as you look back now, most of the job are filled up in the area of like planning of DPD, DPW, and the staff, a certain critical position that's being filled. Inspection service also hired more inspectors to be on board. So these are the thing that come up. And the city manager put out a five-year capital plan.
Twenty seconds.
That will cost us about $60 million, and then break it down to every year. And the first year is all infrastructures, pothole, sidewalk, road, painting, and then including the Cambodia Town Clemente Park renovation, because the park is being used a lot in Cambodia Town. So this is how you solve it, by setting the goal, setting the plan, it's a five-year plan.
Sorry, time's up.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Fru, how do you see us dealing with the school building facility upkeep and upgrade?
Cliff, I am passionate about education, because education builds up the city, the state, and it builds up the future of the country. And I think that to have old buildings whereby during the summer, the kids cannot even sit when it is very hot, the ventilation is horrible, it will make them sick, and even in winter, that the classes are not comfortable, it should be one of our priorities. Because, and I do think that if I were on the council, I will work with the members of the council and the planning commission to be able to, that's part of the budget, should really go and inspect all the schools, not only, because if you look, there's a disparity between the schools in my district, in the district if I'm voted to District Seven than other school district. And I think that everything should be done equally. And as a representative of District Seven, I would insist that to go around all the schools and do first of all, an inspection to see what is really needed, be proactive, not only reactive when the weather is bad and then the students take day off, because that is inconvenience the whole system, parents who were not prepared for day off and all that, and it spends more. So I would focus very much on taking evaluation of what is it now that we need to bring all the schools in standard, and also focus that the budget, working with the city manager, our able city manager, to make sure that we make our school up to standard.
Thank you. Next question goes to taxes, which is near and dear to my heart, and I will start with you, Fru. My perception is that we're getting a lot of subsidy from the federal government and from the state government, but then when I look at our taxes versus local communities, they seem pretty high. Is, what's going on there?
Cliff, District Seven is one of the districts that is economically challenged in terms of income, and the people are very, very hardworking. And when these taxes go up, their income doesn't go up. The standard of living doesn't go up. And I would really think that mostly, I walk the streets and I talk to businesses in these areas, small barber shop owners, convenience stores, mechanics, they say that taxes are very high and that their standard of living, what they earn is too much. So when you talk about taxes going very high, I really feel that it touches the residents in District Seven, that is the Acre and the Lowell Highlands. And if you walk through these areas, you really see that actually, not very much development goes into this area. Like the street lights, as I was walking the streets, there are some areas, there are no street lights. So some of them are asking, we pay these taxes, but we don't see exactly reflected in our neighborhoods. And the mechanics on Payne Street off School Street, I was there, they said, in fact, even in winter, they come there, they try to tow their cars, and they don't even plow those areas. So if taxes are going up, in my district, they don't really see why they pay taxes. It becomes a cause for concern, and I really would, if I'm on the council, I'll work with the city hall and the city manager to address this. And I know our city manager will, if he, if someone brings this to his attention, he will react and think something will be done.
Thanks, Fru. Paul?
Yes.
We're getting this extra money, how come our taxes are so high?
The, I just want to address that. I'm also a taxpayer. I own properties, I pay taxes. But the thing is that we have challenges. The challenge is, just like household, the challenge is that the city, remember, we have to mind the pension for the employee. The pension was increased about $1.2 million this year, and the average healthcare is go up about one and a half, five and a half percent. That mean roughly about $2 million additional cost per 5.1%. The increase in charter school that the city would have to pay out to the charter school. The personnel costs, you know, the, it's a CBA, it's about two and a half, about $6 million increase. And then remember, we have debt services, just like our home, we have mortgages and then other commitment that the city has. All of this increase, we need to really services all this debt. So the city worked together, the counselor and the CFO, trying to manage the increase so we would not have to levy more taxes on the resident. As I mentioned earlier, the city have not been increasing the tax for many, many years. And a lot of people, I heard similar sentiment, perception, if my tax is going up so high. I have one friend, they decided to move to Westford, and they realized how much tax they have to pay compared to what in Lowell. Let me give you what the Lowell tax rate is for residential. We pay $12.42 per thousand.
Thirty seconds.
And the commercial, $24.36 per thousand. Now you go to Chelmsford, $14.37 for residential, commercial is $17.98. Remember, the house in Chelmsford costs a lot more than the city of Lowell. Average house in the city of Lowell is $430,000. And a lot of people say, oh, that's cannot afford it until you look elsewhere. And the city just receive a lot of grants.
Sorry, time's up.
The money that we charge is only about 60% of the budget needed.
Thank you. The producer has a question, so we're looking for a quick answer so that we can get into the closing statements. John?
Yeah, thanks, Cliff. Why do I have to know what city council to get something done in this city? And what will you do to stop this business? It's as simple as yesterday, went down to renew my gun permit. I like to carry my gun. I'm pretty good at shooting it. I have authorization for the seal, it's a card I can carry, that I do carry, that expired on my birthday, which is today. I'm told that I can still carry my gun, blah. Set all that good stuff aside. I've called the police station numerous times, leaving voicemail for, to get my gun permit renewed. Nobody calls me back. I went down yesterday, voted yesterday at city hall. While my wife waited in the car, I took a walk over to the gun permit place, and the door's locked with a sign, call for an appointment. Standing in front of the door, I called for an appointment, went to voicemail, middle of the day. What will you do as a city counselor to stop this malarkey? I mean, you have to, you got to know what city council to get a pothole fixed.
Paul, you first.
What are we going to do to stop this?
John, this is a situation where right now, the personnel is shortage, the police department is down to, down to 40 shortage of officer, because no one want to be the police officer of what they've seen, how the police officer now being a target, you know, simply because you wear badges. So this is the issue. And the door was locked, but there's someone inside.
Nobody's inside.
That is working, and they request that you call for an appointment. I will look into, because this is the first time that I.
But it shouldn't have to be that.
I know, I understand.
Why do we need to talk to the city council to get something done in this city?
Right. And then that's why you need to call the city council right away and say, hey, what happened? So with that knowledge, I will check in with the police department and the manager to see what the story is, and we'll get back to you.
Quite bluntly, I'd like you to lean on the manager and say, look, this malarkey's got to stop.
Okay. Fru?
Well, John, I think what you've done is the right thing. If you bring it up to the city manager and the authorities, that's good. And we encourage all the citizens, the residents, to do the same. So I would equally encourage that we have a direct line of complaints and that the city council should be able to review that line and view the various complaints that come in during city session. Because if we have that direct line public, that will be, it can even come anonymous. So that during city council, they can review that report and actually bring it up in the air. Because that would also encourage all the various city employees to know that there is, they can be reviewed anonymously. And we want and encourage the public to be able to, that number should be available to them. So I think that that is one way to monitor that. I would not right now blame anybody, because my purpose running for this race is to move Lowell forward, bring ideas that can work, and also change redundant policy that could take us back.
Well, my real problem is Cliff knows a lot of people. I know, you guys know a lot of people. You can get stuff done. How does Jane Q. Public get stuff done that doesn't know anybody? That's my point. Thank you, Cliff.
Okay. I want to take a minute for John to make some announcements, and then we'll have closing statements.
All righty, I'm going to go with the announcements for the weekend.
Don't forget early voting and the voting, John.
I early voted yesterday, went very smoothly.
No.
Did a good job.
For the public to know that early voting started already. While you pull that.
Tomorrow is Tewksbury Fun Day, Tewksbury Fall Day. Well, actually, it's today, sorry. This won't blow up. There we go. Today, Friday, October 27th, starts at 2:00 on the town hall lawn, going to have food trucks there, crafts, kids' activities, music. So bring your kids down there, bring your kids down there, it's all free. And also, I'm reminding everybody that you can park in Tewksbury Funeral Homes parking lot if you need a spot to park by town hall. Next up is Jenny Rook's Trunk or Treat, Forty Old Ferry Road, Sunday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Be there or be square, bring your bag for candy, it's going to be a lot of fun. Forty Old Ferry Road on Sunday from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Bring your kids down there. Fall cleanup day, Bruce Freeman Trail Extension, these people are fantastic. The Lowell Litter Crew, God bless you, nice, nice people. Jarvis, the Jarvis family, Jarvis Kia is going to have a cookout for them. But if you want to help clean up the Bruce Freeman Trail, it's Saturday, October, tomorrow, Saturday, October 28th, 9:00 to noon, meet at the south end of the Target Plaza, followed following Jarvis Kia BBQ. It's free. It's free, just bring long pants, long sleeve shirt. You have to have closed shoes, no heels or toes showing, and bring a water bottle. Next up is the Monster Bash. I think it's the Kiwanis Club is
Yes.
conjunction with a lot of other people to make this happen. Saturday, October twenty-eighth, tomorrow, Downtown Lowell, twelve noon to three P M.
And the city hall will transform into a haunted house.
Yep. And city hall, the line for city hall is gonna close at two thirty. So if you want to get in city hall to the haunted house, you need to keep your eye on your watch and get in line by two thirty because they're gonna close the line at two thirty. So don't want anybody to get to. And the last announcement for the day is on Sunday, it's the twenty-ninth, annual community safe Halloween hosted by the Tewksbury Police Station, Tewksbury Police Department, October twenty-ninth, Sunday, one to three P M. The Tewksbury Memorial High School, it's a great event. They're gonna have candy there and they'll have some demonstrations for safety. It's always a good time. So back over to you, Cliff. Time is short. Thank you.
Paul, you got a minute and a half for your elevator speech.
Right. I also like to plug that today, Friday at twelve thirty, there will be a flag raising for the Turkey, Turkish flag raising at the city hall at twelve thirty. All are invited. Again, my name is, I'm councillor Paul Retayam and, and I represent District Seven, that including the Acre. I always say include the Acre. District Seven has a portion of downtown
Three minutes.
and portion of the, of the Lower Highlands, including Cambodia Town. I humbly ask for your vote November seventh to send me back to the city council to continue the progress that we have made in the past two years as a body, as a city council. I humbly ask for your vote again November seven, but you can start voting today at the city hall. His early voting started since October twenty-fifth until November third. And then the big day is November seven. You can also request a vote by mail by contacting the city hall for that. Thank you and God bless.
Frue?
Thank you very much, Cliff. The moderator, thank you, John, the producer. And I want to thank City Life Show and also the Lowellians who are watching us. And I want also to thank councillor Yem for your service these two years. And I would say that I have been walking the streets during this campaign trail and I have listened to you. I'm running to be your servant. I'm running to, to represent District Seven, which is the Lower Highlands and the Acre. Most of you are excited. You've encouraged me and you have told me that you want someone who would be there for you. I have walked, talked to the small businesses and the, most of you have told me that you've not seen your current representative and that is for many years. I walked along the streets to mechanics and they, I hear your concerns and I am really willing to serve you. I am passionate about education.
I'll be here in sixty seconds.
I'm passionate about education. Come November seven, I honestly ask your vote. Early voting is going on now. And if you are really happy with the past two years, then the, the call is yours. But if we are looking forward and looking to move District Seven forward and Lowell forward, please, I honestly ask for your vote. I will listen to you and I will be your voice on the city council and work with the other city council to move Lowell forward.
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
I appreciate your vote. Vote Frue for District Seven on the November seventh.
Thank you both for coming in and participating in this discussion. No matter what the outcome, I hope to see both of you on City Life in the future.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.